Are we good? All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 22nd, meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Nice to see a couple of people live and in the audience. Thank you for joining us. We will begin with a flag salute. And Supervisor Holmes, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We are going to read the meeting procedures, so I will have our clerk go ahead and do that.
For those not in attendance, public comment for the board meeting will be offered remote call-in line or virtually. Citizens who wish to speak on an agenda item can sign up to provide public comment using the county's public comment reservation system by calling 530-886-1800. You may also participate in the meeting by joining through the virtual meeting on Zoom. That can be found at our county website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll begin with our consent agenda. These are all items that will be taken with one motion unless pulled, unless there's an item pulled. Anybody want to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item 12C, please.
12C. All right, thank you. We will... All right, and then anyone else? Anybody from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? It does look like we have somebody, okay, calling in. Okay. Cheryl Burkema, did you wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Shiana. Cheryl, please unmute your mic and let us know which item you wish to remove from the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. It is item 12B, the approved schedule of classifications and salary grades.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. Anything else?
I see none.
All right.
Section.
Motion by Gustafson, second by Holmes, for all items other than 12B and C. All those in... Oh, wait, we need to roll call, please. Wygant absent. Holmes?
Aye.
Uller? Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore? Aye. Thank you. Let's move to item 12B, which is approval of schedule of classifications and salary grades for classified and unclassified services. And I'm thinking that that is Kate. We've got folks online, so we'll have her join us if she's available. Oh, yeah, there she is. She's walking up to us. We're just not used to having people do this. It's been a long time. Good morning, Kate.
Board. There we go. Thank you. I understand you'd like a presentation on the resolution of interim appointment for the health officer.
No, the first one is 12B, which is approval... It was pulled by the member of the public. Approval of schedule of classifications and salary grades for classified and unclassified services.
Thank you so much. Got lost in travel there. Yes, this is a standard item. Every year, the county is required to post a publicly available pay schedule. There are no changes in pay represented in the item before you today. It's just an annual approval to document all of our pays for all positions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues? And then I would guess that we might have a question from the person who pulled the item. Cheryl, go ahead and give your comments on this item.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So first, I wanted to say I appreciate you mentioning that there are no changes in pay. However, the public hasn't, to my knowledge, received a final copy of the budget. Placer County salaries are 23% higher than those of similar counties from going out on Transparent California. A lot of the titles are different, so it's difficult to compare to other counties. But from a perspective of looking at a few of them, it's not clear what the bump in these potential salaries will cost the taxpayer. So I see there's a minimum amount and a maximum amount. And in looking at some of the raises for some of the especially top officials, where they've received 10% year-over-year increases. In addition, looking at the compaction, which was an exercise that wasn't performance-based. It had to do with whether or not a manager's employees can make more than them. And so in the corporate world, that's not the case. Employees often make more than their managers do. A manager's role is to manage. A lot of times, there are specific activities required from the employees of that manager. In a time where EDD $300 is not there, there are pay cuts going on across the state, 10%. There are jobs being lost, yet Placer County is periodically raising and putting raises in almost every board of supervisors' budget item biweekly. And firefighters and law enforcement are being asked to reduce benefits. So I think there's not enough transparency in these items. There also wasn't a column that said what the amount was that changed for each line item. So if you're a director, did that salary increase for the minimum and maximum go up? And what was the percentage? So I think that this item is lacking in transparency and that that item should be provided. And it should be a line item on the budget that the public gets to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other questions from the public? Or I should see if anybody out there wants to comment on this item. All right, we'll bring it back. Kate, do you have any clarification? Or Todd?
I can offer that all of the compensation for employees, as approved by the board, is included in the budget approved by your board. And there are no changes proposed to salaries on any of the pay schedule before you this morning. Anytime the board would be acting on changing salaries would be a separate agendized item for consideration with additional fiscal impact for you to factor into your decision. So again, today is just an annual approval of our existing salary schedule. There are no changes proposed to any of the salaries included in the salary plan before you this morning.
And our budget, which has been... Can you comment, Todd, on our budget?
Yeah, so our budget was adopted on June 26th of 2020 for implementation July 1. No changes have been made regarding this. This really, this item speaks to this California retirement law that requires the notification of salaries for positions. So this is more an informational item slash approval by you as a board. But all money, as Kate alluded to, is all factored in our current budget for all salaries and benefits attributed to any employees in the organization.
Great, thank you. Did you have a...
Oh, no, I just want to move approval.
All right, well, I've got two, Supervisor Uller and then Supervisor Gustafson.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second it, but I'll keep going. Todd, I think Ms. Burkema's question was the budget isn't available to the public, and I wanted to...
She's wrong.
...valid verify that.
No, we... The budget's actually out on our website, all the details attributed to that. Any additional information she has, please give us a call. We have our budget staff are available to answer any specific questions she might have.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just... She alluded to raises that are continuously on our budgets. Obviously, the caller's a little bit ignorant about how steps work within county government, within local government, and our negotiated agreement with our public employees organizations, and how many times these adjustments through the steps are for members of law enforcement. And so you'll see them getting their step increases and all the rest, all of which we are obligated to meet contractually by virtue of our negotiated agreements with our public employees organization, all of which are already packed into our budget, which we approved and has been available online this entire time. So it's just her ignorance is showing again. So I appreciate the motion, and we'll move this one on.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for nothing. Thank you. And then Kate, we have item 12C, which is the appointment of the interim health officer.
Thank you, Chair Gore. I'm pleased that the board is appointing Dr. Rob Oldham as the interim Placer County Health Officer. We're very fortunate to have him. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Amy Sisson for her service to Placer County. Talk about a trial by fire. Dr. Sisson had not been in her position for very long when the worldwide COVID-19 health crisis landed on her desk. I think she performed admirably during her presentations to the board and to the community by presenting facts that she researched and studied. A very difficult task in a national politically charged environment. I know that wherever she goes, she will do the same. And I send her best wishes for success, and I move approval of the item.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. We will go ahead and open up this item to the public. Any comment from the public? All right, and I will bring it back to the board, and we are very... Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Did you want to come up, ma'am? I didn't see you. No, this is the comment on the appointment for Dr. Oldham being interim. We're not yet to regular public comment, so hold for just a moment. We'll come back to regular... We'll come to regular public comment in a moment. You're welcome. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And I agree, I do appreciate... Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. I do appreciate all the hard work Dr. Sisson provided for us, for our county, for our residents. It was a very challenging job, and she and her team worked very, very hard. I really appreciate that we have Dr. Oldham, who is coming back as our HHS director. He served as our public health officer for I don't know how many years here in Placer County. So the transition works out well that Dr. Oldham can step in on an interim basis in this role until we have the opportunity to appoint another health director. So with that, we will... All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's time for our regular public comment. And this is an opportunity for people to comment on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that people keep your comments to three minutes or less. We appreciate that. So we will take people in public first that are here in the chambers, and then anyone who called in on a reservation line, and then regular call-in. So ma'am, you are welcome to come on up.
Good morning. I'm Delana Rude, Kramer Road, Auburn. I attended the Park Commission meeting the other night, and I must say I was really disappointed for a variety of reasons. Most of the members of the commission had virtually no questions. I really questioned whether they had even read the document, which was about this thick, if you all have seen it. I spent four hours at the county clerk's office going through it before we of Protect Rural Placer were able to get several copies. I've barely been able to decipher the almost 300 letters that came in from single-page emails. All of the members of the Park Commission were invited to go on a tour of the area that Hidden Falls will cover, the expansion that is all the way from the Hidden Falls Park all the way to the Bear River, including Kramer Road, Bell Road, Lone Star Road. None of them have gone on a tour. You have all gone on tour, so you know the roads, you know the territory. The big curve that was introduced at this meeting was the Wilderness Pass. This is not included in the draft EIR, SEIR, or the final SEIR. This was introduced to the public virtually at this commission meeting. It's created a lot of questions, and there are very few answers. As near as I can tell, and this is just in the last couple of days of scamming all over the internet trying to figure out where this 21-page document that describes the Wilderness Pass concept is located. I can't find it. The only reason we were able to get a copy was because Jane Wurst received an email from someone, I guess, in the park department, and they sent it as an attachment. So how's the public really supposed to know about it? There was a PR release. It's part of the Placer County PR releases that comes out. Talked about the meeting, talked about changes in parking lots, never mentioned the Wilderness Pass. Meetings like that Park Commission meeting are really unsatisfactory. You're given three minutes, make a statement. Very few opportunities to ask questions. We tried to ask questions. We were shut down. That's no way for the public to become informed about a totally new concept on an issue that is tragic to start with. Our lives are in people's hands, in people's votes. There has to be a better way of informing the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else here in person like to make a comment? All right, do we have any calls, Megan? No calls? And did this woman want to make a public comment? I'm just checking as people are walking in. Nope? Okay. Well, we have public comment right now, just regular public comment on items that are not on the agenda. All right, I just want to make sure people have the opportunity to be heard. Thank you. All right, so nobody calling in and nobody on... That we called in. I'm just double-checking. Cheryl, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the item that I wanted to talk about today was the budget. I sent Todd Leopold, the CEO, a message, and I realized it was late. I hadn't received a response from him. I followed the budget very carefully last year. The procedure for the budget was to adopt a draft budget in the June time frame. It went through a similar exercise where all of the department heads gave a presentation. This year, I realized that the staff was asked to cut, come back with cuts for recommendations. And then following... Last year, following, there was a final budget that was approved in September, at the end of September, before the budget went to the state. I have called the libraries. There is not a copy of the budget at the library. I realize that there are links on the website, but the hard copy is not available for the public, and the procedure has changed. There was no mention that the procedure would be changing, so one would assume that it would be the same as it was last time. I also brought up at your draft presentation meeting the fact that there were no cuts to salaries, staff, things of that nature, and never actually received a response why, when the rest of California seems to be cutting salaries, that that wasn't the case. Last year, there was a significant increase from the draft budget to the actual budget. In addition, right after the budget was approved, then all the change requests cards start coming in. So every year, there are a series of change requests. In other words, budget overruns. Those are never mentioned. And so it's like you don't really have a budget if you can just willy-nilly every two weeks change what the budget is. Those overruns are never accounted for, and we don't actually know. When will the budget be presented to the state, and was it really final in June? That was never listed, so I would actually appreciate understanding why that mechanism and the process was never communicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, we'll bring it back. And Todd, I'll have you clarify, because we did change the process, and we made it very clear from probably February, March, that we were actually changing the process, doing budget hearings, and went through a final process and had made a decision to change it. So Todd, if you would address that.
Yeah, let me speak on a couple of things regarding the budget. The first, for clarity, we didn't request departments cut their budget. What we asked for is maybe a deferral of some of the requests that they were bringing forward for that 2021 year. Obviously, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and as such, we were unsure of kind of what the revenue projection was not only going to look like short-term but long-term. So that was the request was made of departments. What we did bring forward to you as a board for consideration were items that were either urgent in nature or expenses or decisions that were made through the course of the budget for the coming year, we actually incorporated in. So honestly, a fairly small increase from what we had actually been brought forward and was requested back in February and March from departments. As far as the process goes for this year, what we looked towards is a final budget being adopted on the 26th of June. And that actually took place with those minor adjustments regarding not only salary or contractual agreements from a compensation standpoint, but a few items that were included, as well as our capital budget. What ends up happening during the course of a budget, once it's been adopted, the end of the year comes along, we start the new fiscal year. What is occurring right now is departments are revisiting those requests that they had. We noticed to them that we'd like to have a conversation with them once we have a better indication about revenue projections, and bringing back items for consideration from you as a board. The first update's going to be taking place on October 6th, and there'll be a follow-up budget workshop that's actually taking place on November 10th with you all. In between, there's two board meetings. There's a 27th up in the Tahoe region, and then November 3rd will be our next board meeting. And we're going to be bringing forward any proposed recommendations from what was presented and requested back in basically March of last year, or last fiscal year. So there's... The change honestly is fairly minor, and the fact is that you as a board, we bring these items forward for your consideration, and that would be in a budget appropriation that you would make at that time if you feel like those recommendations make sense for the organization. So we've had a budget. I will attest to the fact that I can't affirm that the budget is actually in the library at the moment, but I will tell you that the libraries have been closed and have remained closed, so no one can actually go to those libraries at this point. But we'll make sure that those are available. They're also on our website. Again, I want to make that clear. Online, our budget in its totality is actually on the website, so you can look at that at your own leisure. But we'll make sure that those documents are available for the library system as they come online.
All right, thank you.
And it's available, I believe, at the Finance Administration Building as well. People from the public can gain access to the Finance Administration.
Finance and Administration Building as well. That's helpful. Thank you. Yes. All right, another dialogue. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And opportunity for board member reports and CEO reports now that we've closed public comment. Anybody from our board? All right, Todd, I know that you have an update, please.
Yeah, so I have two items for you. The first item is just a quick update. We did receive our third installment of our CARES Act funding on February 18th. I'm sorry, September 18th, Friday, September 18th. So that was our third installment. We're proposing and having discussions about moving forward with some of those requests that came in back in June when we asked departments for submittals, many of which are all attributed to COVID-related expenses. So that was the first item. The second was a formal request, and you had heard from Gail Garbalino-Mojica back on August 8th. Came and spoke to you all about a request for consideration of some CARES Act funding from you as a board towards student-staff testing as the schools come online. That request kind of varied in nature in terms of the overall dollar amount, but I think the general assumption is around a half a million dollars for testing. I did have a chance to speak with the superintendent yesterday afternoon, and a couple of questions I had for her, and I just want to share these with you all. So you have some context, and then if there's any other questions. I did request, you know, why aren't they using the existing testing sites the county has in place? I will tell you, this has been going on for the last month, a month and a half, to identify a lab that would provide testing to our students and to our teachers. And at that time, the testing, not only the capacity, but the timeliness of those testing sites was challenging, I think, at best, and you've heard that through some of the updates that have been had. I will tell you, there's been, since that time, there's been a great deal of movement in a positive nature. The turnaround times in the capacity are adequate based on the timeliness of those. So there is ability for residents, whether you're a student or a staff member, to actually use the current testing sites. But at the time when that was going on and identifying a lab, that made a lot of sense. The second piece that came out, and this was... These are updates that I received from our public health folks this morning. Kaiser did just announce that they would like all their members to actually be tested at their locations to manage the testing at this point. So that obviously comprises a fair amount of not only parents, but probably students and teachers. So there are other opportunities for these students and staff to actually get tests done in a timely manner. So that was one area. I did ask about what is going to be paid for in terms of the testing and what the request for the funding is. Her response was that they are handing a number of the staff testing, but many of these funding dollars would go for actually student testing for those that don't have insurance. The lab, though, that we are using will bill their own private insurance if those students and staff have that private insurance. So the cost can be fairly minimal at that point. And then the last question I had for her was CARES Act funds. The schools actually receive CARES Act dollars as well, and those were distributed out not only within the individuals, to the individual superintendents. They are also used to individual schools. The funding that she has spoken with about the use of it, distance learning improvements, classroom reconfigurations. There are some long-term sick leave expenses associated with staffing that have contracted COVID, and those costs were not factored into their budget. And then finally, the PPE materials, including both face masks, sanitary stations, and other cleanliness efforts that are going on in each of the schools to allow for students to come in, is what the CARES Act dollars have been primarily used for. So those were kind of the three general questions. Again, she has asked for approximately a half a million dollars, I would say. And speaking with her, this would be a reimbursement. So any invoices or costs attributed to staffing or student testing, we would get... She would be submitting that bill for that portion of it, up to a dollar amount that if you so choose as a board to fund towards this effort, we'd be handling it on a reimbursement basis. I would say that as testing capacity becomes more available and we get the timeliness continues to remain in check, that financial exposure may be minimal as we move along. So I will turn over to you as a board, but I know that there was a formal request. I want to bring that for you for consideration.
Thank you, Todd. Supervisor Uller?
Yeah. Every day, Michael Romero does a great job of updating our board on latest status of, of different things. And then he does a weekly test, excuse me, a weekly report. And that weekly report summarizes a whole bunch of data points, including testing turnarounds, average turnaround times. And, and I'd just point out that in the report that we received on Sunday, we are down to one day turnaround times for commercial, health system, and public health tests. We're at 1.1 days is the average. So it's, it's, it's faster now than it has ever been since March. So there, there is no delay to students, teachers, anybody who's using the existing labs that are available. It's as fast now as it's ever been.
And, and I would agree with that. I will tell you, that wasn't necessarily the case a month and a half ago.
No, it, it's true. In, in July, our commercial were at 5.5 days.
Correct.
And our public health was at 2.4. But now the commercial's down to 1.2, and the public health is also down to 1.2. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're doing very well with our testing turnaround times right now.
So Todd, could we, could the school district direct folks first to OptumServe and then to the other location? I think what's most important is if there is insurance reimbursements, we give those insurance reimbursements. I think that's most important. Otherwise, we're picking up the CARES dollars funding anyway, right? I mean, we're, we're picking up the, the balance of the funding anyway for these testing sites.
Yeah, those, those Optum testing sites are actually state-run. So the, outside of providing testing sites, the state has been providing some contribution towards the testing.
So if we could have those students and teachers go to those sites first, that would be ideal. And, and I have no problem with allocating a portion of our CARES dollars, up to 500,000, we can start with on a reimbursement as needed. But if we can actually direct them to those sites first where the state is funding them, terrific. And if there's not enough capacity, and we know that our teachers and our students have got to get tested right away, then they can go to that other site. So that might be a, an effective way to do this. Supervisor Gustafson?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, the reimbursement would just be the direct costs of the test?
Correct.
No admin or?
There would be some administrative expenses attributed to the LPNs that are actually helping to administer the testing at those.
Yeah, but they're providing a direct service. I'm just trying to ensure that our money goes as far as possible to serve the, the students.
And, and the only way, only expenses would be attributed in the event that a, a staff or a student does not have private health insurance, we would be paying for those tests. Otherwise, they are going to be working on the insurance reimburse.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so looks like we're good to go. No other conversation. So it looks like we can have you move forward with the school district.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. You're the superintendent of schools. All right, we will move to our 9:20 timed item. It is the Sabre City Park Estates. And good morning, Chris. Chris, nice to see you. One of the fastest projects I have seen in Placer County in a long time, so. In a good way.
Good morning, and thank you. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The project before you today is a subdivision. The applicant is Keith Paulson of Infinity Homes. The project is located within the existing Sabre City neighborhood, which is south of PFE Road and east of Wollaga Road in the Dry Creek area of Placer County. The site does have some, some history with the Board of Supervisors. Last May, the board approved the sale of a portion of the Sabre City Park site to Infinity Homes. The parcel was split and the sale was recorded at the end of December of last year. So the Sabre City Park site is now 1.2 acres. A little close-up of the Sabre City neighborhood with the project site outlined in red. Project site is 3.78 acres. Not much as far as habitat on the site, a few scattered trees along Collin Kelly Drive, internal to the site, and then some ornamental trees along Vannum Circle. A few pictures of the project site, you can see the grass vegetation and the scattered trees. Land use designation of the project site is high-density residential, four to 10 dwelling units an acre. There's a mixed bag of residential zoning surrounding the site. South of Sabre City is Sacramento County, so this is on the county border. The zoning on the site is predominantly open space, but there is a bit of residential multifamily density limitation at eight units per acre and combining design scene a quarter. So the proposed project includes 24 single-family lots ranging from 5,100 square feet to 10,100 square feet. All the residences will be singles, residences will be single-story. They'll be manufactured homes and brought to the site. Approximately living space about 1,200 square feet on average. The project requires a few entitlements. We need to rezone the project site from RMDL-8 DC in open space to residential multifamily density, density limitation of 10 units per acre, combining design scene a quarter. The vesting tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of 3.78 acres into 24 single-family lots. Also a variance to minimum side setback to allow for three feet where five feet is normally required. So this shows the rezoning. The existing Sabre City neighborhood is RMDL-8. This project is asking for RMDL-10, just so it gets a larger lot width. So the proposed project. Parking on-site will be in driveways, so two per driveway. The buyer could eventually build a garage behind the residence. Wood fencing along the Sabre City Park site and also privacy fencing in between the lots. The applicant will extend the sidewalk in front of the project. Lot widths required are 35 feet interior and 40 feet for corners. We're providing 40 feet interior for most of the lots, a few 45 feet, and then the corner lots, 50 feet. The variance for side setback is asking for three feet where five feet is required. The existing residences in the Sabre City neighborhood have anywhere from zero feet to six feet side setbacks. So the project is anticipated to generate 228 daily trips, 18 in the AM peak hour, 24 in the PM peak hour. Just for reference, current traffic volume on PFE Road is 5,300 vehicles per day. There are some tree impacts. Nine of the 21 protected trees would be removed. However, we are saving some trees along Collin Kelly Drive and a few internal to the site. Due to this sale of surplus government property, the project is required to de-restrict 25% of the units to low-income households. That would be a restriction for 30 years, and the balance of the units must be available at initial costs affordable to low and moderate income buyers. So this is truly an affordable housing project. We did do environmental review and mitigating negative declaration was completed, and all impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures. This project did go to the West Placer MAC in, in March. Issues and concerns raised were questions about who was providing water service and it's Kell American Water, water availability in general to the Dry Creek area, and then a few questions about the trees being removed. This did not return to the MAC because of the COVID protocols, so we don't have a recommendation from the MAC. We do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, who voted on August 13th, 5 to 0, to recommend approval of the project. One member of the public spoke at the hearing at the Planning Commission in support of the project. The Planning Commission was also satisfied to see affordable housing being proposed. And with that, staff recommends you approve the project by adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project as set forth in attachment to the staff report packet. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the project site from RMDL-8 DC in open space to residential multifamily density limitation of 10, 10 units per acre, combining designs in a quarter. Approve the Sabre City Park Estates vested tentative subdivision map and approve the variance to side setbacks along for a three-foot setback where five feet is normally required. And these recommendations are based on the findings found in the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Questions from my colleagues? All right, we'll open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? Anybody first here in the chambers? And then we'll check to see if there's any, are you just stretching or is that a waved hand? So you're welcome to come up, sir, to the podium.
I don't know if this is the right time if I wait for public comment, but I'm the developer, applicant of this project.
Oh, you are. Oh, that's right. Great. Good to see you. So yes, please feel free to share.
Good to see you also, Supervisor Gore. Project's pretty clear-cut, and I really stood up just to say that I've worked with one of our neighboring counties on close to a dozen projects. This is the first, my first experience with the Placer County staff, and it's been incredible all along the way. And I also wanted to recognize Chris, who has been super helpful. And as a developer, I really appreciate that. And I think that's all I wanted to say.
While you're right here, I just have a quick question for you. If I recall, you went out and, did you reach out to most of the neighbors in that neighborhood? Is that correct?
I did. I walked, I walked the neighborhood, specifically the surrounding lots, and provided them with one of the early brochures. And had a pretty good response. I had a couple of people that were still mad at Placer County for removing a clubhouse that might have been there 10-plus years ago. But overall, I had pretty good support.
Great, thank you very much. And as I recall, the reason we ultimately sold this land was it ended up being pretty much a vacant lot, being used for drugs and sort of some unsavory activity. And it made a lot more sense to actually utilize the land for development of homes because we need more affordable type homes. And this was a, a project that already really fit into that, into that. So I'm glad you reached out to the neighbors, and you can't make everybody happy, but the project looks really good, and it certainly will provide some housing stock that is much needed in the community. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Any other comments from the public? And nobody online? All right, we'll bring it back to our board. Any other discussion?
My only discussion is to thank you as well. I mean, this is a product type that we are so desperately in need of in Placer County, and would love to invite you to look at some properties on the east slope of the county. And so I'll move approval.
All right. We have a motion and all the staff actions that have already been read into the, is that okay if we just do it that way, Karen?
Yes.
And all the staff actions have been recommendations, so I'd make that motion. And I will second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for nothing. Thank you. And it is not quite 10:50 a.m. So we do have a couple of non-timed items, health items. So we've got our Health and Human Services item 3A, which is the Home Key Program application. And if we've got our Health and Human Services staff on the line, Amy Ellis and Kathy Denton, we will hear from you as we get you up on Zoom.
Hi. Hi, so sorry for my delay. I am here.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Gore and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care with the inaction item to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services or Designee to apply for $1.4 million from the Home Key Program and sign the resulting agreement and all related paperwork with risk management and county council concurrence. The Department of Housing and Community Development issued a notice of funding availability on July 16th, 2020 for the Home Key Program. One requirement is for the county, for the county to be able to apply for this available funding is to have your board adopt a resolution to do so. Placer County has initiated the application for the Home Key Grant Funds, which was sent to the department for review and consideration. If awarded, HHS will return to a future board meeting with more information about what was approved and any resulting projects that would then occur. If awarded this grant, we will receive an additional $1.4 million in revenue. Myself or Kathy Denton, the Housing Manager within ASOC, would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Amy. No questions from board members? Any questions from the public on this item? All right, nobody on the line, so we'll bring it back to our board. Motion from Supervisor Holmes, second from Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we still have a little bit of time, so we will move on to the next item, which is item 3B, COVID-19 Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Enhancing Detection Funding, accept the grant award from the California Department of Public Health. And I believe we have Michael. Good morning, Michael. Nice to see you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairperson Gore and, and members of the board. Mike Romero, your HHS Program Manager in the Public Health Division. Today, HHS is, excuse me, HHS is requesting the board to adopt a resolution to accept a grant award from the California Department of Public Health to support the public health response to COVID-19. This grant is referred to as the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity, or ELC, Enhancing Detection Grant. This grant exists for the period from May 18th, 2020 through November 17th, 2022. It's not often that we get multi-year emergency preparedness grants, so this is kind of exciting. The grant's intended to provide critical resources to local health departments in support of a broad range of COVID-19 testing and epidemiologic surveillance-related activities. The work supported by the ELC Enhancing Detection Grant expands upon a previous COVID-19 award that was approved as a consent item of the ELC CARES Grant. These funds will support the public health response to COVID-19 and lay the foundation for the future of public health surveillance. This allocation includes four mandatory strategies that collectively build upon current investments and better prepare Placer County to address COVID-19 response needs over the next 24 months, so post-CARES Act funding. These strategies include an enhanced workforce capacity. That would include additional epidemiologists, infection preventionists, including supervision staff for our case investigation and contact tracing team. The second strategy is improving public health surveillance reporting of electronic health data. This could include getting us better access to hospitalization data, GIS data. The third strategy is enhancing investigation, response, and prevention. That's primarily the ongoing case investigation, contact tracing, as well as outbreak investigation in high-risk settings such as skilled nursing facilities, the jail. And the last section is an opportunity to coordinate engage with partners. Schools-only sites, as was described by Todd earlier, working with higher education, Sierra College, William Jessup, and then the existing partnership with the Latino Leadership Council, the Sierra Community House to outreach among the Latino population, and, and some similar opportunities. The total amount of this ward, of this award is $3,83,969. And I am happy to answer any of your questions concerning this grant.
Thank you, Mike. Supervisor Yular has a question?
Yeah, Michael, first of all, I want to thank you for not only the regular updates that we get and the weekly updates, but I want to thank you for your responses to my specific requests for information as I've been delivering them to you. I appreciate you being willing to go above and beyond and get data back to us as quickly as you do. On this quickly, I, at our last meeting, raised the issue of the cycle threshold. This might not be the right item to have that conversation, but I am curious to know if we've had the opportunity to look into the cycle threshold that we are using. Is that dictated by the state of California at this point? And then I specifically referenced the, the New York Times article of August 29th and their epidemiologist advisory that the cycle threshold of 35 was more than sufficient, and those who are going to 40 are probably picking up too much background noise. Do we have any input on that at this point?
Well, so it's not the state that, that dictates those cycles. It is the manufacturer.
It is the manufacturer of the PCR machine itself. So any lab would follow the manufacturer's instructions.
Okay. And do we know what those labs are following at this point?
Yes, so STEM Express specifically, right, is following, is following the current standards for the machines they're using.
But do we know what that is, what that cycle threshold is, what that number is?
I don't have that number in front of me.
All right. Now, let's just add, at some point in the future, we're going to have another conversation. It's not, I don't think it's necessarily relevant to this item, but since this was the only thing I saw that was somewhat related to the conversation we had previously, I thought I'd take advantage of the opportunity. So thank you, and I'll just follow up with you separately.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your word, your thanks, and I'll reiterate that. You know, we have a wonderful epidemiology team who produces the daily reports, the weekly reports, including our PIO team as well. So I am primarily the paperboy on those reports, and so I don't want to take too much credit for the work that the very, as I say in some of the emails, that your friendly neighborhood epidemiology team puts together on a regular basis.
Well, please extend our thanks because it's incredibly helpful, especially as we've enjoyed the good news of watching over the last two weeks as our hospitalizations have been dropping from two weeks ago when we sat here, and we had 13 Placer County residents that were hospitalized with COVID, and three of them in the intensive care. And as of yesterday, we were down to four Placer County residents hospitalized and two in intensive care. So having that data is very helpful in this board being able to make informed decisions regarding public policy, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Yuler. No other questions from board members? Any questions from the public? None from the public, so we'll bring back this item.
Move approval?
A motion by Supervisor Yuler, second by Supervisor Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for nothing. Next, we are going to move to our next timed item, which is the Hidden Falls Regional Park Trails and Open Space Expansion Project Authorized Grant Application and Resolution. We are getting Supervisor Wegant, sorry, on the phone to participate in this discussion. He is on the road, but he is calling in for this item. So he'll be brought in telephonically, and after we get him on the line, then we will have you move forward, Andy.
Thank you.
All right. Well, you'll keep trying, and you'll let, all right. So we will go ahead. Andy, if you want to move forward.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gore, members of the board. This action before you, the request before you today is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works or designee to apply for a grant for up to $3,027,090 to the California Natural Resources Agency for a portion of the proposed Hidden Falls Regional Park Trails and Open Space Expansion Project. This grant program comes out of Proposition 68 that was passed by the voters on June 5, 2018. There are several grant programs that come out of Proposition 68. This one is the Recreational Trails and Greenways Program, and the stated purpose of this program is to promote new or alternate access to parks, waterways, outdoor recreational pursuits, and forested or other natural environments to encourage health-related active transportation and opportunities for Californians to reconnect with nature. This is a one-time competitive grant program. There's $27.7 million available statewide for this program. What we're requesting this program to fund in our case, to apply for, would be, as said, a portion of the facilities that we are contemplating in the environmental study of the Hidden Falls Regional Park Trails Expansion Project. Specifically, the project description of this grant would fund a parking area off of Bell Road in Kramer and a piece of property popularly known as the Twilight Ride parcel. It would pay for development of 54 automobile and 20 equestrian parking spaces, as well as the entry-drive and improvements, the improvements off of Bell Road, stream crossings, small ephemeral stream crossings, a permanent restroom, portable water, potable water well, water treatment and capture that goes into the pond that's on the site, a helicopter landing zone for emergency access, a 12,000-gallon water tank with a hydrant for emergency fire response, emergency access, access for emergency equipment to get into the site, equestrian amenities, informational and interpretive and wayfinding signage, and a natural surface trail connection to connect to the trails that are already within the larger expansion parcels for the property. I wanted to say a word about the status of where we're at in the study of the larger Hidden Falls Expansion Project and why we're here before you today before that process is complete. We did begin the study, the subsequent environmental impact report, back in late 2016. We are at a point now where we have just published the final subsequent environmental impact report on September 4th that was published. It's presented to the Parks Commission on this, on Tuesday, September 17. The Parks Commission recommended the project come forward for approval to your board. We will be presenting that project to the Planning Commission on September 24th, that's this Thursday, at 5 o'clock, and we expect to be before your board with the recommendation sometime this fall, later this fall. The grant guidelines for this grant allow for an application to be made and for an award to be announced before, before SEQA review is complete. You cannot, they will not allow construction to begin or funds to be released before SEQA is complete. This grant, like most at the state level now, have what they call a pre-application process. So back in October of 2019, looking at the priorities and the fit of this grant to this project description, staff did turn in this project description in a pre-application process. At that time, we had a pretty reasonable expectation that before they would be, we would be moving forward with the full application, we would be able to complete SEQA. But then COVID happened. We also had some delays in our process due to changes in SEQA guidelines, and so that's why we are here asking for your permission to apply for this, to formally apply for this grant before SEQA is complete. Not the normal process we would want to be in, but we are following the state guidelines. The state guidelines for this grant require, in order to stay competitive in the grant, that it be submitted before September 26, the resolution that's before you today. And I want to emphasize a few things. This application does not commit the state to funding the program. It is, it is only that it keeps us in the competition going forward. The state tells us they expect to make their announcements and recommendations on funding at the very end of this year, perhaps the beginning of next year. Again, we do expect that we would be back in front of the board with a recommendation on the SEQA document for the project in the fall. So we do believe that whatever the outcome of SEQA will be, we would be able to then update the state with the outcome, and they could respond to that accordingly before they make their recommendations on the grant. If we do eventually end up in a grant agreement for what we're asking for, $3 million, a little over $3 million for this project, we would be obligated to a matching amount of $934,200. So we would need to return to the board with a recommendation with a funding package for that match. At this point, we would be looking at combination of development fees, park dedication fees from areas surrounding, and general fund would be the two sources. We would continue to look for other matching sources that we could offer up as well, but that would be an obligation before we entered into an agreement. The other thing I want to emphasize is that this application does not commit your board either way to the project. You can still, when it comes before you, like I said, you, you have the full options available to you in the review and decision on the project, and whatever that is, we would pass on to the state for them to act accordingly. So with that, I'd like to turn it back to your board for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Andy. Supervisor Gustafson, questions?
You saw me reaching. Andy, thank you for the presentation. As you know, this is pretty problematic based on the timing, and I understand the timing was somewhat out of staff's control. So I wanted to turn to, on the resolution, to item number three. It certifies that applicant or title holder will have sufficient funds to operate and maintain the proposed project should the grant be awarded and contingent upon board action on the sub, final subsequent environmental impact report. I haven't seen a proposed operating budget or revenue streams for this project yet, and that has been concerning me for some time, and I've raised this with staff, so I just wanted to see if you had any further answers on that for me today.
So again, with the, with the decision on the entirety of the project in conjunction with the SEQA review, we would provide that expectation and funding package for both development and operational costs. So we would, we would have that for you this fall with the, with the consideration of the entire project. So I think before, in this resolution, again, it's to apply. If the project doesn't go forward, if the board does not elect to go forward, we would still have that opportunity to not enter into the grant agreement. So the effect of the resolution is contingent on the environmental review and entering into a grant agreement.
In which we would be provided with an operating budget, sources of funding, and projected expenditures for that, because usually these grants, the state grants that I'm familiar with, require some period of maintenance funding, 20 years is somewhat typical for state funding sources.
Exactly.
And then my second question is, obviously, we would prefer not to be in a position where we're telling the state, we may want this money if, and then withdrawing our application later, and that that could create issues for the state in looking at us in the future for potential applicants. Are they serious this time? In other words, you know, and so I just want to be cautious about that as well and share that with my fellow board members, because my experience was always, you don't want to do that very often with the state.
That, I would agree, and I would say we have a good track record of spending the funds we have received in the past. We did use, there were different grant programs, but the same Natural Resources Agency Bonds and Grants Division has administered much of the funding that developed the original Hidden Falls Regional Park, so I think we do have a good track record going forward. And it was a specific provision of this grant round to allow applications prior to the completion of SEQA. I think they recognized that there are a lot of projects out there that they wanted to consider, and if they did not allow them to come forward into the process before SEQA was complete, that they were missing an opportunity. So I think the state went into that with their eyes open and intentional on how they set up this grant program.
Well, I do want to commend staff that out of $27 million statewide, we're in the running for $3 million for whatever, whether I agree with the project or not. I just want to commend you for that. My last question is for county council. So is, is our actions today, I know Andy has said that they're not predeterminational on the outcome of the EIR, but I want to be assured by county council as to any action that is taken today. Could it be seen as predeter, a predetermination of how we might vote on the EIR?
The issue of predetermination is factual issue. It would be up to somebody to challenge this. What I can tell you is what's before you is a request to apply for a grant. Unlike many of the requests that you get in front of you, which is not only to apply for the grant, but also to approve a grant agreement, that is not what's before you today. It's only to apply for it. Parks would have to, if we should be fortunate enough to be awarded a portion of this grant, Parks is going to be required to come back to this board with the grant agreement and the operating budget for the board's consideration, at which time the board can authorize that grant agreement or reject it. So from the standpoint of what's in front of you, it's just an application for a grant. Now, what is often brought up and what is a concern and remains a concern of our office in these instances where, you know, the cart's before the horse, so to speak, is the fact that under the Save Terra case, you worry about predetermination on a project. And that remains somewhat of a concern that we will simply have to work with if it comes up. What it means simply is, under Terra, is that if a board goes forward with many administrative or financial arrangements and actions, have they in fact then pre-committed themselves to approving the project down the line? I would say, considering this is only the grant application request, that we are not at that point. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't. Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are my only questions. I have other comments, but those are the only questions.
Thank you. Questions, Supervisor Yuler?
Yeah, Andy, thank you for, it was my recollection that we had successfully applied for and received grant dollars for the original park, and so we do have a good track record with those folks. To the issue, though, of ongoing operations and maintenance, have we had any problem meeting our maintenance obligations with the existing park?
Problems in terms of not being able to do it, no. Challenges, yes. We have, we have continued to increase the ranger program in response to popularity. We brought on the reservation program. We continue on an annual basis to, all of the, the follow-up fuel load work that we have at Hidden Falls, so challenging, but not undoable.
But that challenging is due to the popularity of the park as opposed to our inability to actually make sure that we meet our obligations on ongoing operations and maintenance and reduction of fire load, those kinds of things.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Chair Gore. Question for council. What you just said about predetermining, that reminds me of when the Costco project was in North Auburn, and the city of Auburn sued us because of we presupposed that we were, is that kind of the same thing?
And this is a perfect example of why this is also always a factual determination. And the situation that Supervisor Holmes is mentioning, and it's actually a good example. We went forward with a ground lease, an option to ground lease for Costco, and the city of Auburn sued us and claimed that the exemption that we had adopted for that action was, was in violation of SEQA because there were actions within that ground lease that predetermined actions by the county. That case was ultimately settled, but what you always have to watch for, and we have to watch for, for example, in the resolutions of this sort of thing, is, is there something that, that the county is required to do by virtue of this action that result in an environmental impact? There were questions on the Costco one because it involved earthmoving. That's clearly environmental. This, you have a situation of simply wanting to apply for a grant. I would point out in the resolution that the items in the resolution are the ones that are required by the state in the grant program. They are fashioned, though, to note that it, that it's contingent upon the certification of an EIR, the subsequent EIR. So staff has been very careful as to how it is worded to try and avoid what happened in the Costco situation. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, very clearly. So if someone, if we did take this action and someone decided to sue the county, that would set back the project until that was resolved? Yes or no?
Well, that's an interesting question, because if somebody decided to sue on just this, it would be suing on basically, I mean, I'm not going to present legal theories because I really don't want to help an opponent, no offense, but it would be, it would be an interesting legal theory that, that what is required to apply for a grant, because that's really what you have here. So what kind of SEQA reviews required to apply for a grant? As you often see when we have other grants, you don't have, or you have simply SEQA review that's- that's more on the exemption line. The unfortunate situation here is we have a pending project that is coming forward, will eventually hit the board, but is happening after we're applying for the grant, which relies on the environmental review that will come later. So that's where you have the difficulty here. But in separating this out, you're looking at this project as, does the board want to go forward and apply for the grant? You don't know if the grant's going to happen. Staff will have to come back with the grant agreement and an operating budget. And setting this aside, because you're not right now committing to the matching funds, I think that's another important item to mention, you're not committing to that. That'll happen when this grant, if you have the grant. And if the project moves forward and if staff comes forward, okay, there's a lot of ifs there, then you'll talk about whether you're going to have the matching funds. So right now, the question is, do you want to move forward with the grant knowing that it is before the environmental review on the merits of the project?
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Yuler?
Yeah, I'd just point out that our board with great regularity encumbers public dollars frankly, on projects of infrastructure in the anticipation that the infrastructure will facilitate new development that will be approved, that will then pay us back those dollars. And so we have a long history of up-fronting things, essentially knowing that at some point we'll collect the money and be able to pay ourselves back. And I would think that that practice is, could be pointed as far more predeterminative, if you will, than something like this, which is simply a grant application. So, you know, this practice of the county taking an action before a subsequent action that would ultimately end up paying us back, I mean, we, at no point has this board ever adopted findings on a development project to say, we find that it's necessary to adopt this project in order to pay us back the money that we already put into the ground for the infrastructure. So I, we have a practice of anticipating the possibility of future decisions by the board. We have some groundwork we need to lay, so let's go ahead and lay the groundwork. And I think that's all we're doing today.
Thank you. A couple of questions, Andy. So you mentioned that we would have to come up with a matching grant of $934,000 if we did indeed receive this grant, correct?
Yes.
And you said that the funds could come from a couple of different sources. Do you have, do we have funds set aside for this, for projects like this, for park projects like this? You mentioned park development fees. Do we have, $900,000 is a lot of money and I want, you know, I don't, I don't know where those dollars are coming from.
Right.
Do you have, I mean, I don't think where those dollars are coming from.
So we do have, I think to give you an idea, in the surrounding, in the areas surrounding this project, in our park dedication fee accounts, I would think it would be pretty reasonably foreseeable to be able to recommend 300 to 400,000 at least of park fees of that amount. Some of that's also taken into consideration. There are other pressures on those park fee dollars. Auburn Recreation District has let us know what their priorities are in this area. We work with them constantly. So that's, you know, in terms of scale, that would be one of our recommendations for park fees. We don't have other earmarked funds at this point, so we would have to look either at general funds or look at other grant opportunities that were eligible to match. You can't match Prop 68 funds with another Prop 68 program. We would continue to look for other grant funds to match.
So speaking of Prop 68, you mentioned there were other types of grant, grant applications for Prop 68 dollars, but this is the only Prop 68 grant that the county is applying for, correct?
It is not actually. There is another program. I believe we came to your board in January and we will be updating you. It is a per capita grant program. There were four projects. We thought originally we would receive, just by formula of the grant program, non-competitively 400,000. That turns out to be 633,000. So we will be recommending to the board where to put those, four different projects, where to put those grant funds.
Some of those capital projects that we have identified already?
That's right. Precisely. None of them have to do with Hidden Falls in the recommendation right now, but that is another Prop 68 program, but could not match this grant.
And so clarification, because somebody did forward to me the capital improvement plan, you know, there's a number of projects the county's identified for capital improvement projects. And I wasn't aware until I spoke with you yesterday that the pre-application happened in October of last year and thus, your team looked at the list of projects and this was the project that most matched this grant fund. Is that my understanding and then?
In our mind, that's true, yeah.
All right. So, so if we were, so at this point, we can only apply for this project because we already did the pre-application?
That's correct.
We couldn't choose to look at something else on this list?
That's correct. The state's looking at it on the merits of this project description.
All right, thank you. No questions, no further questions from me right now. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. So we have members in, oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Holmes, you first and then we'll have the public.
When this project came forward, we all went out to the, drove out to the site. We were all excited and said, oh boy, this is going to be great. We forgot one critical component, the people that live out there. And so they let us know right away, in no uncertain terms, about their objections to this. And so, I'm, you know, I'm struggling with it. I'm kind of conflicted. Is there any reason why this has to go to the planning commission on Thursday? Can we push the pause button for him?
The agenda is out. I don't believe I can speak for the planning commission. I believe EJ may be here.
Actually, I can speak to this. It's more of a legal issue. If you're asking if it can be, it's noticed, but it can certainly be continued on a motion of the planning commission.
Yeah, I would prefer that, since there is a new phase project that you brought to me a week ago. And I don't know if the planning commission has had a chance to check it, check that out. There's certainly the people that will be affected by Hidden Falls expansion. Doesn't seem to me that they've had enough time to use that. So if we move forward, I would like to see that planning commission continue to a later date.
So I just want to be clear, that's on the EIR, not on the grant application.
Right.
And I would, I would agree with you on that, but I don't want to confuse the public that we're, that the grant application isn't on the park, uh, planning commission agenda. They wouldn't weigh in on that, correct?
That's correct.
That's just up to us.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. What's on the planning commission agenda is the request regarding certification of the final EIR and a consideration of the merits of the project.
So since Supervisor Holmes brought this up, and I had actually wanted to bring it up during our board reports and made a note and forgot, I do think, and I would agree with you, that we need to postpone the planning commission hearing on the final EIR, or SEIR. And for a number of reasons, it feels like it's been rushed through. The final documentation for the final draft EIR is huge. And it sounds like there have been some changes in the project which people were not aware of. And so I really think that we need to take our time to answer questions and make sure people have the time to review this. I asked yesterday, is there a rush for us moving forward? And I still think that this board can hear this item before the end of the year, the final SEIR, but I think that it's important for our residents to have that time to review it, to ask questions, maybe have a town hall where people can have questions prior to the planning commission, where people can either call in or be in person. Since we're not having our MAC meetings, it would be an opportunity for the public to really hear the item. So I think that we would be prudent in doing that and it sounds like you would agree with that as well. And so that would be my recommendation and I'm, and knowing that the planning commissioners got that packet, I think on Sunday, I called my commissioner and I said, you got your packet, what do you think? He goes, well, I have a couple of days to review it and it's a lot. And if my commissioner who's doing this, because he knows he's doing it, we've got the public out there, I think it's important that we take the time for them as well.
And if I just may comment, I would say Parks is also eager for, for the recommendation, what we call a reduced project. It's not a change in the sense of adding anything. It is a reduction of a portion of what's studied in the EIR. We are eager for people to be able to digest it and hear it, because I think that recommendation came out of hearing the comments that are in the EIR. It came from hearing both the users and the neighbors. So I hope it reflects folks' understanding that we did listen to those comments and adjust our recommendation. So we would share your concern with people being able to digest it and understand it.
Great, thank you, Andy. Now we'll open it up to the public and I will ask folks to come on up. You're welcome to come up one at a time. There are circles on the carpet, so I would encourage you please to get up in line so that way, and then you can walk around the board chambers as you go back to your seat. That way you're not passing one another and you can stand in line and it doesn't take us a lot longer. So ma'am, you are welcome to come up, please. And then those who would like to speak after her, you can stand up behind her in an appropriate distance fashion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Delina Rude, Kramer Road. I have a couple of questions for you, Andy. Can this money that you're applying for only be used for new project construction or can it be used for deferred maintenance?
So ma'am, you go ahead and ask the questions and then we'll have staff answer all the questions at one time.
Okay, and my other question is, and this, this came out of the park commission meeting the other night. A gentleman who's lived in the Mears Road area for many, many years stated that in a meeting with, I assume it was park people, that a promise was made by the county that there would be a bunch of roadwork done. There's one very bad turn down there, evidently it's a 90-degree turn, and I don't know what the other, I don't recall what the other issue was, whether it was a big hump in the road or what. Nothing has ever been done about the roads and the people in the Mears area are very, very concerned and very unhappy because of the amount of traffic and all you have to do is drive our roads and you'll know what I'm talking about. The other concern that I have is that there is a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance there and I would like to see a pretty detailed list of what has been accomplished, what needs to be done, because it seems to me, all we do is we're charging forward, charging forward, charging forward, and we're not taking care of what we already have. And then you have to look at, okay, we've got the 1,200 acres down there, we're barely keeping even, we don't have enough employees down there, and yet we're continuing to add on. It doesn't make sense. I do a budget, I'm sure all of you do a budget. All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. Where's the money coming from? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning supervisors. This is, I am Tiffany Vanderlinn from Meta Vista Trails Association, as well as a representative Placer Trails, Backcountry Horsemen. I guess after listening to all this, where I want to go with it is I've read the reduced project plan thoroughly. We approve it. It seemed to me that there was about 60% reduction in there. Again, we are, this is just applying for this grant. So I guess where I'm going is that I hope that you guys approve this application to go forward. The next thing is, on behalf of myself for Meta Vista Trails, if this project was to go through the whole project, that myself and a couple of our other people are looking to help the residents, the neighbors in, near the park with the county and moving forward to make their desires for this project in their favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Bob Gelliam and I've lived in the Auburn area for about 35 years, including 15 years running a sheep ranch out near the Hidden Falls Park. I'm a member of Placer Trails, which is a coalition of seven trail groups active in Placer County. We have a combined membership of over 4,000 bikers, hikers, runners and equestrians. And I'm speaking on behalf of Placer Trails to urge your approval of the resolution to authorize public works to apply for a grant of approximately 3 million from the California Natural Resources Agency. The grant would fund a portion of the proposed Hidden Falls Trails and Open Space Expansion project if the board approves the project. So last week, county parks submitted a plan to the parks commission and the public for a reduced project for Hidden Falls. It would dramatically reduce parking and public access from the original full project. The reduced project is a compromise between, one, the level of public access that trail advocates and county park staff believe may eventually be needed, and two, complete elimination of the project as sought by some neighborhood opponents. Despite the reduction in parking by about 60% from the full project, the elimination of open public access at Cottola Ranch Road, the reduced project approximately doubles existing parking and achieves public access to 30 miles of new trails through Placer Land Trust preserves. Placer Trails has decided to unanimously support the reduced project as a reasonable compromise that will substantially reduce neighborhood impacts while still opening up a new network of multi-use trails. The parks commission reached the same conclusion with a unanimous vote to recommend the reduced project. So we urge you to recommend, to approve the grant application. If the board of supervisors ultimately approves the reduced project, funding from the state grant under consideration today would fund a major part of its implementation. If you don't approve the trail expansion project, as we certainly hope doesn't happen, then you can decline the grant if it's offered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson Gore and members of the board. My name is Maureen Henderson and I am here on behalf of myself and also the spokesperson for Loomis Basin Horsemen's Association. And being here this morning and listening to some of the questions that the board has asked about the effect of this grant affecting future grants by the county, I think that Andy and also county council, county council has answered those questions quite well. I, we approve, we would like you to approve the request for the application. I don't see a downside to applying for the money. The only downside that I see is that if we don't apply for the grant and down the road, this project is approved by this board, wouldn't it be a shame that we didn't receive that approximately 3 million that we would have to go ahead and proceed with the project? So I really can't see a downside. I'd also like to incorporate into my talk today, we're also a member of the Placer Trails, so I'd like to incorporate the statements made by Placer Trails into what I had to say here today and I hope that you'll move forward with approving this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir. And if there's anybody else who would like to line up after this gentleman, please do so.
Good morning, chair and board members. I'm Jeff Foltz, a Placer County resident and also a citizen of the city of Rockland. I represent my family, my children and my grandchildren. I also represent Gulf County Trails Council, an equestrian trail maintenance organization with over 300 members, with many members here in Placer County. I'm here to speak in favor of the grant. to speak in favor of the grant. I would say the grant is a great return on investment. For every dollar the taxpayers of Placer County put up, we get three in return. Not a bad investment. While the county finalizes the Hidden Falls Expansion Project, this grant is a great placeholder should it be approved. We recognize we're a little premature here and understand the sensitivity of elected officials and having to make any kind of commitment. But in my mind, this is not a, you're not making any commitment to what your decision's going to be made with respects to the final decision on Hidden Falls Expansion. The county has done a great job over the last four years, developing and shepherding the Hidden Falls project through the public process, partnering with other agencies and nonprofits, seeking federal and state grants, listening to the public, informing 6,000 residents surrounding the project on multiple occasions, public notification above and beyond the normal process. You have been sensitive to the fire issues, developing fire breaks, adding water tanks in the park, closing the regional park on high fire danger days, addressing the overflow parking, which bodes to the Hidden Falls popularity with park reservation system. Thank you for your stewardship. You've done a great job with that. You have made every effort to work with the neighbors, and now staff is recommending a reduced project in scope to the original project, which received a 7-0 approval by the County Parks Commission. If the project is approved in the next few months, this grant will be a great foundation and first step towards development. Hidden Falls Regional Park is truly a legacy for the 500,000 residents of Placer County, 500,000 residents. You can take advantage of the regional park you guys started many years ago. Grants don't come around every day, and especially for park construction. Let's seize the day and apply for the grant. Thank you for your time and the great work you're doing for the residents of Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room like to speak? All right. We will go ahead to telephonic or Zoom calls. Thank you. Kristy, go ahead and unmute your mic, start your video, and give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kristy Clays. I live in Roseville, and I'm the Land and Recreation Manager at Placer Land Trust and speaking today on behalf of Placer Land Trust. For more than 15 years, Placer Land Trust has been working with Placer County, the State of California, foundations, and willing landowners to acquire and protect more than 2,500 acres of open space preserves in the Big Hill area where the trail expansion project will occur. Placer Land Trust supports openings preserves to public recreational use, maintaining, while maintaining protection of these preserves as required by existing conservation easements and other agreements. With continued cooperation between Placer Land Trust and Placer County, the trail expansion project can be achieved in agreement with the intent of past conservation work concurrent to continued agricultural and grazing use and in conformance with the specific conservation restrictions on these preserves. Placer Land Trust supports the final EIR, and we support building the reduced project and support today's purposes of approving just the funding application for the project as reduced. The reduced project adequately mitigates impacts of the trail expansion project and will provide a significant public benefit in access to and outdoor recreation on these Placer Land Trust preserves. Placer Land Trust encourages the county to adopt the resolution to authorize the county to apply for funds supporting a portion of the expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments, please.
Good morning. My name is Jane Worst, and I am part of Protect Royal Placer, and I live in North Auburn. My husband, neighbors, and I question why the Parks Division would choose the controversial Hidden Falls project that hasn't even been approved over all the 21 approved recreation and trail projects that are on the five-year capital improvement plan, all waiting for funding. Other communities would like to see their projects move forward. This $3 million would certainly help, and this request jeopardizes that money. So please tell us today what made the Hidden Falls project a priority over all those projects, even a priority back in October of 2019. We believe this was a poor decision even back then. This request gives the appearance that the Parks Division has been given assurance by the Supervisors, at least some of you, that they plan to approve the Hidden Falls project. This undermines our county government that calls for projects to go before the municipal advisory councils and the planning commission before going on to a full public hearing before the Supervisors, before they make their decision. Approving this request will further erode trust. Just because the grant allows the applicant to submit unapproved and unapproved project, it does not make it ethically right or fiscally responsible. I would also like to note that regarding the adequacy of funds for the upkeep and maintenance of Hidden Falls, the well that became non-functional in 2015 has not had the funding to make those improvements. I think just recently Andy stated that they might have it figured out, and so five years later, maybe the money has come through. We urge you to deny approval and direct the Parks Division to select an approved project for the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next public comment. Jim, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello, this is Jim Hogensmit from Newcastle. Just like to encourage you to approve this grant request going forward. As others stated, you know, it is not committing the county to actually receive the grant, but it's one of the steps in the process of applying for it. I'd like to think forward in the future, 10 to 20 years, when hopefully the park is been expanded, and it's been, it's an asset to the community, and people would then look back and say, why was there such a controversy over such a great use of the rural landscape of Western Placer County, rather than more ranchettes and more traffic due to the increased, all the increased residents that would have been out there if we hadn't protected all this land and continued to support agriculture and public recreation and all. So I want to kind of encourage you to support the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name's Heidi Hansen. I live in Lincoln. I am also a member of Placer Trails, Gold Country Trails Council, and Placer Nevada Cattle Women. I am hoping that the Supervisors support going after this grant. This grant, even though we call it a grant, I do believe the funds for the grant came from taxpayer money. And as a taxpayer, this is the exact type of thing that I like to see funded. I also appreciate that the conservation group is committing to keeping cattle grazing on it. So it can be multi-use now where the public can enjoy the trails, plus we can continue to keep an agricultural usage of that property, as they do over in Napa Counties, Contra Costa Counties, with, again, the duplicate type of usage of open rural properties. So I hope that you guys go ahead and do this. I think that having those funds used in Placer County and not losing that opportunity is very, very important. So I support the expansion. I'm very happy with the compromise that they have made to try to make everybody reasonably pleased with what we're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next commenter, please. Cheryl, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Cheryl?
Cheryl. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hi. I'd first like to thank Supervisor Holmes for offering to make the recommendation that the public needed more time in that area, especially the local residents. I think there's quite a few that have concerns still. I wanted to also mention that it's quite disturbing that the pre-grant process did not include the public. Andy Fisher came, I believe it was last summer, to the MAC meeting in Granite Bay, and there was never any discussion about which project would be selected to receive or to provide any funds. There's an award-winning trail system in Sacramento. One of the projects that was mentioned was connecting from Sacramento to Placer County, and I personally believe that would serve two communities and is also a contender for grant money. Why was this not brought to the public? It was never in the Sacramento B. Where are all the surveys that were out? The pre-grant process, as Bonnie Gore mentioned, she didn't even know about it. I find that to be lacking in transparency. Just because it wasn't provided doesn't mean that it shouldn't be corrected. I think also that the operating budget, as was mentioned, isn't there. When Andy Fisher mentioned at the MAC meeting, there aren't even funds to put turf on the existing park and trail systems. The residents of Granite Bay voted down to even improve the school system. So I think using general funds at a time when we don't even know, every single meeting, the chair talks about our small businesses. I think small businesses should be our priority now in general fund spending and not for a park and trail system. We have people that are desperate, that are looking for money, and I don't think it's appropriate to do that. I also think that this legal discussion here is not including the moral discussion. As someone mentioned, the ethics. The ethics of putting forth a project without having gone through the process, whether or not it can be legally challenged, is quite disturbing. The Sunset Area Plan is yet another project where, as Supervisor Yuler mentioned, oh, there will be future funds that we can arrive from it. That has not been proven. There's been no economic analysis to show that, and the same is true here. Where is the economic analysis that says, yes, we understand that we want park systems, but has the economic analysis been put forward where the small businesses might actually benefit more and provide more revenue? Placer County counts on small businesses and recreation and tourism as part of that. So I think there needs to be a little bit more thought done on that. But I hope you'll consider that there wasn't a transparent process in this, and I think it goes back to two years ago, and it should have been thought about a lot more back then. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment. Judy, go ahead and give your comments.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Judy Isman. I'm with Protect Royal Placer. And I did want to bring to your attention that most of the individuals that have come and spoken in person to you today are from the Placer Trails, an organization that has, like I say, utilized and combined all of the different trails, hiking, biking, equestrian groups, and they have a very large number, which should not outweigh the voices of the local residents, the agriculture community, which is endorsed by the Farm Bureau. They are against the project. Something that I did want to bring to your attention about this request for the grant, if you look at page two of two, item three, it says, "Certifies that applicant or title holder will have sufficient funds to operate and maintain the proposed project." There's no timeline. So it's a proposed project to be maintained for one year, two years, 25 years. I think that is an important consideration for the county as we move forward. And I just wanted to make sure I brought that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no more public comment. No more public comment? All right. We'll bring this item back to our board for further discussion. Supervisor Yuler?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, actually, there were some questions. So let's, I realize that, sorry, zoning out. Thank you, Andy. There were a couple of questions. I don't know if you took note of them. I have, I mentioned a few, or I've written down a few, if you want to.
Well, let me, let me start with maintenance at the existing park. Couple of different areas of maintenance were brought up that I recalled. Two areas there now that we are working on, one is the well. So it has been out of service since the end of the drought year, so it has been about five years. We have money in a capital account to redo the well. We had some new, young, energetic staff came on, take a look at it again, and said, you know, I don't think we may need to do a new well. If we look at filtration, storage, low-flow devices, we may be able to use what we have, and it appears that they're right. So they're doing that testing right now. We may be able to save the expense of a new well by just retrofitting the well that we have right there. So we're in the final testing with environmental health right now. Hope to be bringing that back on. We're still thrifty with water. We only use it for a restroom, a drinking fountain, and horse watering. So we hope, so that's why. That's the explanation of why it's not back on right now. The other areas, so with fuels management, we do do follow-up veg management on all of the areas around the parking lot, shaded fuel breaks. We graze down about 260 acres, I believe, per year within the 1,200-acre park. So we keep up with that on an annual basis. There were, if you go out near, within the first mile of the parking area, you will find, there have been some social trails that have been developing over the past several years. We also have money set aside to work on those. We're designing a fix for those. So it really is not an issue of money and deferred maintenance out there right now. It really is, we're just getting on to it and fixing those things that do come up, and we are able to do those things. You said you-
There was a question about the funds could only be used for new projects, not deferred.
That is correct. Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
There was a question about road work, but I really think that's in conjunction with this project. So if this project moved forward, then the road work would be addressed as a part of the project. Correct?
The statement actually at the Park Commission was from somebody going back to, I think, years 2004 or '05 about the road work in conjunction with the existing parking area. And the comment was that we didn't live up to promises on doing the road work. I wasn't in this position at the time. I know we did road work out there. I know there were conditions on the project. To my knowledge, we met them before we opened up the park today. But I wasn't, in the meeting, that the gentleman said that he heard some promises that weren't kept, so I can't speak to that. But that does go back to 2004 or '05.
And if there's future, if there is, if there is a project that's approved, there, if I was reading through the draft EIR, there would be some changes to road work if we moved forward with this project, I recall.
The conditions associated with this project on road work, entry improvements, all those kind of things would be codified in the conditions of improvement and mitigation. So they'd be there in writing for anybody to look at.
And then the question about pre-grant applications. There are often opportunities for grants. Staff do this all the time. They look for opportunities, and they come back to us. And then we approve the grants. So-
Right.
A pre-application typically would not become, come before our board. Staff is doing their job like they're supposed to. HHS has opportunities to apply for grants, and then they come before us. So the fact that you did not bring this pre-application to us would be, you did your work in the normal way. You wouldn't typically bring a pre-application grant to us, correct?
That's right. And I really appreciate that, because we- Because we do, we submit for what we think we could be competitive for and be to our advantage on a pretty regular basis, and the ones that they come back and say, sorry, you weren't competitive, they just disappear. We don't ever bring them. So you're right. It is part of that constant looking for funding opportunities for projects all over, not just Hidden Falls, but throughout the county.
All right. Thank you for answering those questions. Now let's have some further deliberation, or if there is.
I don't have any deliberation, but I'm ready to move that we adopt the resolution authorizing Director of Public Works is designated to apply for the grant to the California Natural Resources Agency in order to be used for, should the board take in the future any subsequent action to move forward with the Hidden Falls Park, allowing us to take advantage of those dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have further discussion?
I'll second for further discussion, because I see it's not going to be a second and otherwise. You know, this is, in general, my philosophy. I think the board members, and I think the public know, I have a pretty extensive background on trails and recreation, and I've chosen to live my life in an area where there's a lot of recreation. And this year, bar none other, we've heard complaints from every area of my district about overvisitation and people getting out and recreating, which is really sad, because this is so much of the foundation of what I think makes Placer County so special and why we all live here, is not to be in an urbanized environment and to have opportunities like this. And for those of you who haven't seen the PBS special on Ken Burns on the national parks, I really encourage you that people had leadership to really establish parks that preserved incredible swaths from private development and allowed the public to use those. So in general, that's where I come from. But in this situation, I also have met with the neighbors. I've seen some of the concerns they've expressed, and they've, I think, been, you know, very vocal about that, no doubt very vocal. I've received more emails on Hidden Falls than I think anything else we've done since I joined the Board of Supervisors. I would love to find a middle ground. I'd love to find a compromise, and I hope that moving forward, that direction can be given. I don't think anything I do today, I don't want to stand in the way of finding that compromise, if at all possible. So I guess what I'm saying is, what I do today is not predisposing me how I'm going to interpret anything on the final project that comes before us, and I want to urge staff to try to find and get the public involved. I support delaying this to see if we can work out more compromise with the neighbors and find ways to mitigate that. And so I will support applying for a grant to keep the door open, but I want to be very clear, that doesn't predispose me to any further actions that I might take related to the project. So, thank you.
I'll share, oh.
Second.
I'll share a few things. So when Hidden Falls came before me originally, I made it very clear I was going to wait until the final EIR came through before I made any determination or decision, because I didn't have enough information. I was new on the board, and I wanted to make sure I did my homework. So I've been out to the site a few times, and I have read the letters that people have sent, and I have been poring over the draft DIR of late. And I still have yet to make a determination on this project, because it does need to go through the process. I've heard from residents who want it. I hear from residents who are concerned about what could happen in that area if this project moved forward. So I still have not made that decision, and I want the public to know that, because this is actually a very frustrating vote to take, because I see the value and the opportunity for a grant, which somebody said, yep, those are taxpayer dollars coming back to provide an opportunity and amenity to our community, which is terrific. But it's very frustrating, because I wish I wasn't asked to take an action on something that I have yet to determine and make a decision on. So I'm very conflicted, I'm very frustrated about it. I'm very glad that we're going to postpone the Planning Commission hearing to allow some further conversation and discussion, and really allow people the time to review all of those documents. So I'm just seeing how frustrating this is, and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity, and that's what we need to do. There are grant opportunities from the state of California all the time that we are going after as a community, so that we can use those taxpayer dollars to benefit our local community. But it's a very frustrating situation in which to be to take a vote on something, because I have yet to decide how I'm going to vote on this project. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'll support the motion, but I want to make sure that we encourage the Planning Commission to postpone the hearing on Thursday and move it to a later date to give the residents that are concerned about this more time to evaluate the project, and Planning Commissioners as well.
Thank you. So for the record, Supervisor Weigant did not call in. He was not, we were not able to get a hold of him, so he will not, is not present for the meeting nor the vote. We will go ahead, and we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for the public for your participation. We will move to item 3C, which is the Placer County Mental Health Services Act: Services and Expenditure Plan for Fiscal Year 2020 through 2023. And I believe, is Sue Compton via Zoom?
I am here. Good afternoon, or good, actually, it's good morning, what do you know?
Good morning. Thank you, Sue.
Supervisor Gore and distinguished members of the board. My name is Sue Compton, MHSA Coordinator for Placer County. The action I'm requesting today is to adopt the Placer County Mental Health Services Act: Services and Expenditure Plan for Fiscal Years 2020 through 2023. The state-funded Mental Health Services Act, the MHSA, has effectively partnered county and community services in Placer County since 2005. This funding has been managed to allow services to the seriously mentally ill, as well as evidence-based prevention and early intervention programs to remain stable even during economic downturns. A new MHSA Services and Expenditure Plan is required every three years. It's updated annually and must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. The planning and implementation of Placer County's three-year plan is overseen by the county's MHSA Steering and Approval Committee, the Campaign for Community Wellness, CCW, whose mission is to support the traditional and non-traditional mental health system in Placer County using innovative, collaborative, culturally competent, and consumer-guided approaches. The MHSA plan consists of five core components, each with different goals. The Community Services and Supports CSS component expands and transforms services for individuals of all ages living with a serious emotional disturbance or a serious mental illness towards recovery-oriented services. This includes full-service partnerships, or FSPs, a 24/7 direct services model that has proven to be a successful alternative to a higher-cost institutional placement or incarceration. In fiscal year 2018-2019, for adults enrolled in FSPs for at least two years, there was a decrease in reported residency and psychiatric hospitalization, 40%, a 50% decrease in incarceration, 33% in emergency shelters, and 30% in homelessness, and a decrease in the number of days across all categories compared to the prior year of enrollment. The expected expenditure for FSPs funding is approximately $6.3 million annually. The CSS component also consists of system transformation as well. Sorry, my mouse is not cooperating. Trying to get back to where I was. So system transformation services. Let's go to my piece of paper instead. The CSS component includes system transformation programs aimed at developing capacity with values-driven, evidence-based, and promising clinical practices. Over 3,000 residents across all age groups have been served by programs such as community-based individual or group mental health services, culturally-specific supports for Native Americans and Latino communities, peer support and advocacy for youth, adults, and families, housing and supports including nearly 140 combined proposed and existing beds, crisis services, embedded school and county wellness centers, and newly-launched 2-on-1 services. The expected expenditures for system transformation funding is approximately $4.9 million annually. The Prevention and Early Intervention component is intended to prevent mental illness from becoming severe and disabling by treating individuals early in its emergence and by providing services to those whose risk of developing a serious mental illness is higher than the average population. Programs also include education for increasing recognition of early signs of mental illness, suicide prevention, and stigma and discrimination reduction activities. There will be 41 PEI services funded to assist nearly 4,000 people in our community. The expected expenditure for PEI funding is approximately $2.7 million annually. The Innovation Component includes programs designed to develop new strategies and learning opportunities. This component of the plan is on a different timeline for regulation requirements, but is still required to be posted as part of the entire plan. The current innovation plan, approved and adopted in 2017, concludes at the end of January 2021, is the Homeless Integrated Care Coordination and Evaluation Plan connected to our Whole Person Care Program for $775,000 a year. Absent any revisions to the current MHSA regulations, Placer County will need to identify a new innovation project in 2021. The Workforce Education and Training Component provides county, contracted agencies, consumers, and family members education and training to develop skills to improve service delivery with estimated expenditures of approximately $238,000 annually. The Capital Facilities and Technology Needs Component, CFTN, provides capital funding for MHSA programs and funding to implement an electronic medical record program and MHSA data management system. The expected expenditure for CFTN is approximately $438,000 annually. Significant MHSA revenue reductions currently forecasted to hit in fiscal year 2021, 2022 may not allow for direct MHSA funding to these two categories, WET or CFTN, to ensure funding is prioritized for directly maintained services. This impact may require training and technology needs in those years to be funded at the program level. In conclusion, this MHSA three-year Services and Expenditure Plan was vetted with the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board, the Campaign for Community Wellness, and was posted for 30 days to receive public comment, which ended August 23rd. A public hearing was held by the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board on August 24th. There were no verbal comments. Written comments included several identified errors that were corrected in the plan, as well as concern related to the community's plan and ability to meet the needs of the LGBTQ and older adult populations, and requests for articulated guidance for delivering culturally competent services. The Campaign for Community Wellness has noted the positive results, the investments made through the Placer County's MHSA, and supports the continuation of these programs to improve services and supports for all people in Placer County experiencing mental health issues. No county general funds are required as part of this action item. And to conclude, we would like to request the Board's adoption of the MHSA Three-Year Services and Expenditure Plan, and we can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. You know, I have one question, and it's in regards to the Homeless Integrated Care Coordination and Evaluation Plan. And it sounds like that's a project that's already happened, but I don't know to what extent, and maybe it's just for future, but I would really like to make sure that the county coordinates with our cities that are addressing homeless issues as well. So as much as possible, as we're talking about the issue of homelessness, right, it's not just a county issue. We have efforts that are taking place in the city of Roseville and the city of Auburn. I know Lincoln's got some programs going on, and I think it's just really important as we continue conversations about homelessness, that it really needs to be a county-wide conversation with our city partners, so that we aren't duplicating efforts.
It's an important comment. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. All right. We'll open this up to the public. All right, and we'll bring it back to our board for any action. A motion by Supervisor Holmes and a second by Supervisor Gusterson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for the good work. Our HHS department does a lot of work to help our community, and appreciate your efforts as we move forward with all these different programs.
Thank you.
Well, next move to item 3D, which is the Mental Health Service Act contracts. And that's you again, Sue.
It is. Thank you again. Sue Compton, MHSA Coordinator for Placer County, and I am joined by Amy Ellis, Deputy Director of Health and Human Services, and Trilla Abrahamson, Deputy Director, HHS, and Brett Wood, Purchasing Manager. I have three action items requested with this item. Number one, approve the award of the Competitive Request for Proposal Number 20079 for the Mental Health Services Act MHSA services to the 11 proposers identified in Attachment One provided. Number two, approve the 11 agreements identified in Attachment One related to this RFP to provide MHSA services from October 1, 2020, through June 30, 2022, in an aggregate amount not to exceed $17,101,27, including the option to extend these contracts for one additional one-year term. And authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to execute the agreements with risk management and county council concurrence, and to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed 10% of the total contract amount or $100,000, whichever is less, consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. For nearly 15 years since its implementation in Placer County, the state-funded Mental Health Services Act MHSA has effectively delivered community supports and intensive crisis services, housing, and ongoing supports to the seriously mentally ill, and a host of well-researched, evidence-based prevention and early intervention programs. The county's Campaign for Community Wellness, which functions as the county's required MHSA Steering and Approval Committee, and includes service recipients, community-based providers from many sectors, and various county agencies, has overseen and reviewed the development of these proposed agreements. Based on that county, based on the county approval, a Request for Proposal Number 20079 was developed and released for these services, and notification was distributed to 122 agencies, of which 33 accessed the RFP. A total of 15 interested agencies submitted proposals. The RFP was developed to solicit proposals from service agencies to provide 10 specific categories of service. The evaluation panel comprised of staff from Adult and Children's System of Care, community nonprofit organizations from both eastern and western Placer County, and the Placer County Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board, reviewed the proposals and recommended a ward of 11 agreements attached in Exhibit One. Procurement received a protest regarding the award recommendation for category 5.3.7 peer services for the adult system of care. The protest was thoroughly investigated and found to be without merit, and the protest was denied. Descriptions of the services and dollar amounts were recommended for the award for each contractor are detailed in Attachment One. These agreements were approved at the September 15, 2020 Mental Health, Alcohol, Drug Advisory Board Executive Team Meeting. The county's Campaign for Community Wellness Committee recommends approving these agreements, and procurement services concurs with this recommendation. These expenditures were funded, are funded, by 93% federal and state revenues, $15,823,474, and 7% required county general fund match of $1.277,653,000. Sorry. Contract expenditures of $7,373,000 are included in the department's fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, and $9,802,54 will be included in the department's fiscal year 2021-2022 requested budget. The same funding sources will be used for fiscal year, excuse me, the same funding sources used for fiscal year 2020-2021 will be used for fiscal year 2021-2022. To conclude, we would like to request the Board's approval of these action items, and can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Looks like there are no questions from my colleagues, any questions from the public, and we'll bring it back to our board for a motion. Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Gusterson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And look at this. We are moving to closed session at 11:10 in the morning. Go ahead, Karen, and you can go ahead and report.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider five items of existing litigation.
Thank you. We'll be back after closed session. All right, we're back from closed session, and we will have county council report out.
The board met in closed session to consider the following items.
Hold on one second.
What's that?
Okay.
And now we will have county council report out from closed session.
The board met in closed session and considered the following items. Carlisle versus County, the board heard a report and provided direction. Foster versus Ronco, the board heard a report. No direction was requested and no action was taken. Hoenestein versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and authorized defense of the named defendants. Cole versus County, the board heard a report. No action was requested and none was taken. County of Placer versus AmerisourceBergen, the board heard a report. No action was requested and none was taken. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And with that, we are finished with today's business, and we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, October 6th. Thank you, everyone.